The April 5th, 2022 meeting of the Bernards Township Planning Board is now called to order. Please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law of 1975, notice of this meeting of the Planning Board of the Bernards Township was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building, Collier Lane, Basking Bridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Burnersville News, Whippany, New Jersey, to the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey, on January 19th, 2022, and was electronically mailed to all those people who have requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Bernards Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after 10:00 p.m., and no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after 10:30 p.m. Roll call, please, Ms. Kiefer?
Certainly. Chairwoman Padice?
Here.
Mr. Baumann?
Here.
Mr. Crane?
Here.
Mr. Demergian?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McNally?
Here.
Ms. Manduk has indicated she'll be a few minutes late. Ms. Mastroangelo?
Here.
Mr. Seville has indicated he is unable to attend. Mr. Eorio?
Here.
Mr. Malik?
Here.
Mr. Banish? Mr. Drill?
Here.
Mr. Probeer indicated that he is unable to attend. Mr. Schley?
Here.
And for the record, Ms. Kiefer is present. Madam Chair, you have a quorum, you may proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Banish just arrived?
Here he is.
Thank you. The first item is I forgot to excuse the absences on the February 22nd meeting. It was Mr. Demergian and Ms. Manduk. May I have a motion to excuse their absences from February 22nd?
I'll make a motion to excuse her.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to have a motion to excuse Mr. Seville from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next item is the approval of minutes from the February 22nd, 2022 meeting. The only, the two that are not eligible to vote are Mr. Demergian and Ms. Manduk. May I have a motion to accept the minutes as drafted?
I'll make that one.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mastroangelo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the approval of a resolution for Fellowship Senior Living Incorporated, Block 9301, Lot 33, 8,000 Fellowship Road, PB 20-005A, approved. We are approving the resolution 22-03-24-V2. I do have a correction that Mr. Eorio's name?
Version.
Version two. Mr. Eorio's name is E-O-R-I-O. That's in the vote to motion section and in the members section. May I have a motion to approve that resolution as amended?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. All in, do I need a roll call?
Roll call.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Okay, I just want to confirm that everybody up here is eligible?
Well, you can call it off the bottom.
You want to call it off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Want to call it off?
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
No, no, no.
No, Mr. Crane? Okay.
That's a problem. I don't have Crane on the bottom. That's another correction.
Then we cannot, okay.
Use the top, use the top to call for the vote.
Okay.
Can you start again, call the roll from using the people that are listed under the vote on the motion?
Those in favor? Do you have that?
I actually don't have that.
Oh, so let Kippee call.
I'll call it out.
Thank you.
Mr. Baumann?
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Demergian?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Ms. Mastroangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Eorio?
Yes.
And myself. So motion carries.
We skipped Manduk.
Right, we skipped Manduk because she's absent at this point, and we skipped Seville because he's absent at this point.
He becomes absent at this point.
And you also skipped Mr. Malik.
All you need is one person to adopt a resolution.
Adopt a resolution, yeah.
Skip two? Skip two?
You need a quorum for the meeting.
One person and only the people who voted on the application can vote on the resolution. Okay. We have to have appointments to two landscape committees. The first one is Christopher Bell and C.C. Edwards Developers LLC, Block 7702, Lots 10 and 11, 3526 and 3536 Valley Road, PB 11-011. Mr. Schley, can you just tell us what is expected of this committee? Because I know that one house looks kind of done and another house looks to be built.
Yeah, with the Bell subdivision one, the landscape committee, the applicant has to have all the perimeter landscaping around the entire development done before he gets a CO on the first house. So that's why he's in now. He's not ready yet, but in the case of both landscape committees, developers have let me know that they're going to be planting any day, so we want to have the committee ready to go. The first one, the Bell subdivision, that's a bigger inspection. It's like a field trip kind of inspection of the perimeter landscaping and landscaping around the basin.
Martin Berman, Block 2001, Lot 4.
Yeah, that's one new house, a minor subdivision off Strew Street, and that was a more limited reviewing the evergreen buffering between the new home and a couple of the adjoining homes.
Okay.
So that's not going to be as big of a...
How many members do you suggest for each committee?
Three for each.
Okay, so please note, Ms. Manduk has arrived.
Is the Bell development the one across from the Little League?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Fenwick Place is also...
Right, 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 right.
So I would like to be on that one. So I'd like to have two more people to be on the 1-4 Bell across from the ball fields.
This is during the day, obviously, right?
It'll be during the day.
Yeah. Let's do the merge.
Yes.
And?
I'll volunteer.
And then the other one is an infill property on Strew Street. Do we need three people for that?
Yeah. This one, depending on how quick the developer gets to treason, this was one where the board wanted the inspection to be during the leaves-off condition. So if he doesn't make it pretty soon, you'll be, I don't know how we'll handle it internally, but you'll probably be dealing with the homeowner at that point in the fall.
In the fall?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody would like to do Martin Berman?
Mr. Schley, when do you envision if we had to get out there sooner rather than later? When would that occur?
It's up to the developer, but they've both told me they're on the verge of planting. You know, sometimes I don't hear from them for three months after that, but they could be ready next week. I know for the Martin Berman one, the leaves-off condition one, he's well aware of that condition, and we don't have to, it'll be a little complicated if we have to defer that to the fall because he's ready to sell the home, so we'll have to make some arrangements. So I don't know the answer to your question. I'm told it'll be soon, within the next few, couple of weeks.
Reason why I ask is I would volunteer. I'm going away the middle of next week, and I just don't want to volunteer in the future.
Oh, well, actually, in both cases, the developer has to notify the neighbors. He has to give 10 days' notice to the neighbors, so you got at least two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
So I will volunteer.
Okay. Anybody else? At least one other person. I can, Ms. Mastroangelo and I can maybe, I'll take the third slot.
Do you think two is okay, Mr. Schley? It's just...
I can take the third slot. I'll take the third slot.
Okay, so McNally, Padice, and?
Right, Mastroangelo. So we have Mr. Baumann, Mr. Demergian, and myself for Bell, and Deputy Mayor McNally, Ms. Mastroangelo, and myself for Martin Berman.
And I'll send you a package on both of them with what you need to look at it, and Cindy will coordinate the scheduling and all that.
And as we all, as you know, one person will have to just write up a short memo to Mr. Schley observing if it was compliant with the conditions, and then another person or that same person on the committee can give a brief report for the record at the next scheduling meeting. Okay. The next item is the public hearing of F. Ahmed, A. Phaizen, Kevin, and Natalie Kirkwood, ZB's 21-030, Block 2301, Lot 562, Wisteria Way, amended preliminary and final subdivision, PB 21-005. Good evening. Who is going to be the primary spokesperson for the four of you? Mr. Ahmed?
Yes.
Am I pronouncing it correctly?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. And are you having any other witnesses? Engineer or anything like that? Okay.
How about the four of you up here? Are you the only one that's going to speak? Because I have to swear people in.
Yeah, I will be the only one who will be speaking.
Okay, so can you raise your right?
Wait a minute, I'm not...
Oh, sorry.
Okay, before we begin, I'd like for the record anybody who visited the site to say what they observed, et cetera. Did anybody visit the site?
Yes.
Mr. Demergian?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So I drove down Wisteria Way, and I looked for the emergency access path, which I did see. And I guess it goes sort of up the hill, past the pond, behind 48, address number 48, and then it sort of disappears. I didn't drive up the path.
Okay.
So it goes, according to the drawings, I assume it goes behind 48, behind 62, is that the number? And then it turns down.
Right.
Couple observations based on what I read in David Schley's memo. The memo, I guess there was a, let's see. Just bear with me. Okay, so it's described as a gravel road. It appeared to me that it was paved. Is that...
Mr. Ahmed, there, until you're sworn in, you're not able to answer any questions. So, Mr. Demergian, it would be more of your observation as opposed to a question?
These are, okay, these are my observations.
He's answering his observations.
Right.
Just let him observe.
Do you want to swear him in?
No.
Okay.
No, just make your observations.
That was my observation. It states that it's supposed to be gravel road. It appeared to be paved. The other observation was, according to the, I guess the, says there's not supposed to be a gate, but I saw a gate. Those are my two observations. That's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Mastroangelo?
So like Mr. Demergian, I visited the site, well, observed the access road, which goes behind lot four, the Kirkwood residence, and kind of runs up a hill and circles back behind lot five. It is paved. It's not at all in question that it's paved. It has a white gate. When you first enter the development on the left, a white gate. Circled around to lot five, and the entrance to lot five, you can see that the house has been removed. There's a large pit there. I also observed on both, at both entrances, these reflecting signs that are about, I would say, four feet off the ground that indicate, I think, along the entire emergency access road. They're red and white, I think, so that if it was not even a fire truck or something could see where the path leads. And that's all I saw.
Okay. And I also visited the site, and I did observe, like the other board members, that I noted that the prior resolution said that it was gravel and it is paved, and I did see the gate, and I also went up to 62 and looked around to see that, you know, the house had been demolished. So that's it. Anybody else go to the site and observe?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Crane?
Yes, I also drove the whole road, and I also was staring away, and I also walked the whole approximately 1,000-foot of what I'll call the driveway loop behind the two homes.
You guys don't tail off at the end.
What I did notice, that the homes are pretty far apart, and the driveways, the homes all had sidecar garages, which would make access out of the driveways easier, as they could drive out. I did also...
He has nothing to say. He's not going to say. No, we're talking about who's swearing. Keep on going.
I did notice there's mountable curb. It appears to be what's on the plan, a 24-foot curb. I noticed the four hydrants that are on the plan. I also noticed hydrants going on both sides of the entrance off of Merker, Meeker, I should say. I noticed the pond as you come in on the left-hand side. The pond, I noticed, had high vegetation toward the driveway access, and to me, it seemed to be more accessible for water toward Wisteria Way. If they had to get to, the fire company had to use that to pump out. The gates, I also noticed, they're very close to the road. Opposite of the gate, as you come in, there was a transformer and a fence, which, in my view, would, it seemed very tight to try to get a truck in there with that scenario. The road going between the, by the pond and the property line, there's very limited. It dropped off very quickly. There is an air raider in the pond indicating there's some volume of water, I would think, but nothing on the south side of the pond by the entranceway of the access road. I shouldn't say access, what we call an emergency path. When I walk the path, it's a very steep path, as the contours indicate on the plan. It's a very windy path, very steep. Just, it gives me a feel for driveway versus what I would consider a approved access RSI road, in my view, from my view.
You talking about the pathway or Wisteria Way at this point?
The pathway.
Emergency access.
Emergency access, okay.
I'm going a pathway. On the upper part of the pathway, it exits out toward Wisteria Way. That's a very steep road that it's accessing also. It looked like at least 10% to me.
10% grade?
Grade, yes. And the driveway path, emergency path, seemed like a 13% to 14% slope in that area also. There's also some trees by both entrances for the emergency access, which would, I think, would potentially hinder access into it. What else did I? There is no electric poles. It's all underground. It seemed like the right-of-way was pretty clear. There wasn't a lot of trees in the right-of-way in case, I think, there would be opportunities to go over the mountable curb if there was an accident in quite a few areas. I think that's about it. Thank you, Jim.
Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Ma, can you please stand up? We will be swearing you in. Mr. Banish, do you have any comments on the application? Okay, please stand. Mr. Schley, please stand.
Sorry, I think maybe we should all swear in, in case some question I may not have answered.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Certainly.
Let everyone stand up. Let's join the party. Everyone raise your right hand. Everyone swear or affirm that the testimony that they may give in this application will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Starting down here, slowly, identify yourself, spell your last name, please.
Natalie Kirkwood, K-I-R-K-W-O-D.
Kevin Kirkwood, K-I-R-K-W-O-D.
Faizan Ahmed, F-A-I-Z-A-N, A-H-M-E-D.
Anila Faizan, A-N-I-L-A, Anila Faizan.
Okay, and?
David Schley, fourth one.
Okay. Everyone's been sworn.
Okay, very good, thank you. In terms of how we will be conducting the hearing, you can sit down, Mr. McNally. We would like you to present the application of what you're asking for, and then the board will be asking questions of you, and any one of the four of you can answer the questions, and then I will open it up to the public to see if they have any questions for any of you about the application. Then we will go over, I'll ask Mr. Banish, our board planner, if he has any questions or comments. Mr. Schley had a memo. We will be going over that memo, and if there are any questions that were raised or any issues that require clarification, you will be asked to do that. Then, after that, when you conclude, I will open up it again to the public for comments, not questions, general comments about the application. At that point, then, the board will go into deliberation, followed by a vote. So please begin, Mr. Ahmed.
Sure. First of all, I want to thank you, Honorable Board Members, Chair, and the Council for your time and giving us the opportunity to present our case. I also want to thank you, Ms. Cindy, David Schley, for helping us guiding through the process. These both are assets for this town.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I, so we are the applicants here. We seek to amend the 2001 and 2002 subdivision approvals relating to the Wisteria Way development, including modification slash elimination of relevant conditions of approval so as to eliminate the requirements that we maintain an emergency access road located on our properties. So David Schley sent the memo, so it has all the details. So I am skipping most of the details, but I want to point out a relevant law that was, because of that, there was an emergency road that existed there. The New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standard, RSIS, became operative on June 3, 1997. In their review of the Wisteria Way subdivision applications, the planning board applied both the cul-de-sac limit set forth in the RSIS, which is based on average daily traffic, and the cul-de-sac limit set forth in the Township Land Development Ordinance, which is based on the measured length. The subdivision complied with the RSIS limit, however, did not comply with the township 1,000-feet-length limit. Thus, it required the modification. So after the Wisteria Way subdivision approval, the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs issued RSIS Clarification Number 4, which is dated on June 19, 2003, and it states, quote, "The Site Improvement Advisory Board is aware that some municipalities are imposing a limit on the length of cul-de-sacs. Many of these municipalities are enforcing provisions that were in municipal ordinance prior to the adoption of residential site improvement standards. They have reasoned that because there is no length limitation in RASS, they are free to adopt their own requirements. That is not the case." It continued, "The decision to impose an average daily traffic ADT limit on cul-de-sacs rather than a length limitation was intentional. The original Rutgers model, subdivision and site plan ordinance limited cul-de-sacs based on ADT because it was a better measure of the function of the cul-de-sac and was less arbitrary than the length limitation. Therefore, any attempt by a municipality to impose a length limit is in conflict with the RSIS. Such provisions have been superseded by the RSIS and are unenforceable."
Mr. Ahmed, the planning board allowed the longer cul-de-sac?
Yeah, in other words, the planning board, you said that you correctly read the clarification. It says the township municipalities can't enforce their cul-de-sac length ordinances. The planning board here didn't, did it? It approved the 1,900-foot-long cul-de-sac. It didn't limit it to 1,000 feet, correct?
That, I think that was the reason they imposed to have an emergency easement.
Where does it say in the resolution that that was the reason for the easement, and it wasn't just general safety because the cul-de-sac was so long? I read the resolution, and as I see it, the planning board said they're concerned the cul-de-sac is so long, therefore, they imposed that condition. They didn't say that we would only not enforce the 1,000-foot if the developer agreed to that.
Okay. I actually understood when they said that it's so long, I thought they were referring to the limit that is 1,000.
I didn't read it that way either. It was strongly encouraged or agreed, I think, was the language that they used.
Okay. I will move to our main argument.
Yeah, because if the township didn't enforce the 1,000-foot limit, then that RSIS Clarification Number 4 is kind of irrelevant to your argument, right? Your argument, I assume, is going to be it's not needed for safety. It was imposed for safety. If it's not needed for safety, then you're going to ask the board to eliminate it. If the board decides it's still needed for safety, they might want to leave it there. If they decide it's not needed for safety, then they would lift it, or some other reasons the board members could come up with.
Right. So, yes, so, okay. Number one is that for number four clarification that we have, so that's one argument, and we believe that for safety, it is not really needed. There are only 11 houses, and there's not much traffic there, and I think it hasn't been even used. It's been there for a long time, and I don't see any reason, like if tree is fallen and blocked, and there is kind of a way to go through from the side?
Did you review the memo from the Fire Prevention Bureau?
Yes, I did.
Because item two said that the access road has been used for emergency response when a portion of the roadway was blocked by fallen trees.
Correct. They mentioned that. So my argument is that if a tree is fallen, maybe the vehicle could go through the front yard of the properties. Those are there. And similar case was Emerald Valley. I just want to bring to board's attention, June 7, 2020. Their cul-de-sac was 2,959 feet long, and there were 22 houses built there. And that was also board hair that and approve.
Yeah, do you have the resolution that approved that?
Yes, I do.
Do you know what reason the board gave that it agreed to eliminate the emergency access?
Yeah, board basically, that reason number four clarification, that's what the main reason they mentioned there.
Do you know where it says that in the resolution?
Yeah, number four, I think...
Why don't you bring it up? The board is not, when the board takes an action, it doesn't create precedent, but...
That's right, that's my thought.
But I think, but since the applicant is pointing out an action the board took, I think that... I think that we should just read into the record the entire, the entire reasoning. This is the memorializing resolution, which was adopted August 18, 2020, for Emerald Valley, and this is from the factual findings and conclusions.
Can I just ask a question? Are we comparing apples and apples here?
Well, that's why I want to read this, I don't know.
I think that we're getting to, Ms. Strangelo.
I mean, no, but you're talking about the logic behind an emergency, but you're not talking about a similarly situated, exact development, so I don't understand how, okay.
Like, I just want to, paragraph four A cites the fact that the clarification says that you can't enforce the longer cul-de-sac restriction. Now, it might, I, it might very well be that in Emerald Valley, there was some enforcement of it, but I wanted to focus on paragraph four B, second. "The board finds there has never been an emergency situation arising in the subdivision which required an emergency vehicle to use the emergency access roadway since it was installed." The board notes in this regard that even if there was a fallen tree across Emerald Valley Lane, emergency vehicles could get by the obstacle by driving across homeowners' front yards. In fact, both the Liberty Corner Fire Company and the Township Fire Prevention Bureau advised the board by an email dated June 23, 2020, that they had no objection to the elimination of condition 12. And the Liberty Valley Corner First Aid Squad advised the board by email dated July 1 that it had no objection. I just wanted to read to the board that, in that case, your emergency services sent in, in writing, saying they had no objection, and the difference that you have to consider is that in this case, the fire, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I just want you to understand that, what the facts are. You have to determine whether to eliminate the condition based on these facts. Here you have the Fire Prevention Bureau sending in a formal memo dated February 14, objecting to it, and I'm going to summarize, they have four points, the first paragraph. And, by the way, they say that the, um... "The Fire Prevention Bureau concurs with the Basking Ridge Fire Department and recommends the application be denied." That's the last sentence, and what it says is, "The following are the comments received by the Basking Ridge Fire Department." Number one, "The cul-de-sac is unusually long at 1,900 feet. The length on its own warrants a secondary means of access." Want to, by, step aside for a second, make an editorial comment. Is there anything in the RSIS that prohibits a board from imposing a secondary access? To the best of your knowledge?
Hmm, no, it's basically tell, like, why you can enforce, where you cannot.
Right, but it doesn't talk about what the board can impose as a condition in terms of safety, correct?
Not to my knowledge, and I am not a attorney, so I haven't read the entire thing.
Number two, "The access road, as Kipitas read, has been used for emergency response when a portion of the roadway was blocked by fallen trees." Number three, "The access road provides an alt-" it says "and," it means "an alternate means of access to adjacent homes in the event of a structure fire." And number four, "Access to the pond at the entrance to the emergency road provides for an alternate water source." So, again, I'm not taking a position on what the board should do, but I am saying that what the board did in Emerald Valley is distinguishable from the facts here because you have emergency services not objecting there in Emerald Valley, but objecting here.
Yeah, it's not the same fire department, right, for Emerald Valley was Liberty Corner, I believe?
I don't know, but it's the same Fire Prevention Bureau. It's a different fire department, but the same Fire Prevention Bureau.
And regarding the alternate water source, I think Wisteria Way has a better access to it, actually.
I didn't understand that argument.
He's saying that, in the memo, the Fire Prevention and the Fire Department said, "Access to the pond at the entrance to the emergency road provides for an alternate water source."
Right.
And the applicant is saying that it's easier access from Wisteria.
Wisteria Way to the pond.
He hasn't said it's not an alternate access, he's saying the better access is from Wisteria.
Which I think is consistent with Mr. Crane's observations.
Yes.
Yes.
I guess I have to ask if, you're asking for this to be vacated?
Well, he's actually, he changed it. The application asked for it to be vacated. I think after he got Mr. Schli's memo, he was very specific tonight. He asked that the requirement that they have to maintain it be eliminated.
Okay.
He's changed it up.
All right, so if, if we were to approve this, and the requirement of maintenance is eliminated, if you don't, how are you going to, since it's a paved emergency access road, and you do not maintain it? Can you explain what's going to happen to it, then?
Well, we are not planning to do anything right now, but if it is vacated, if we...
Well, won't it degrade? Won't the pavement degrade eventually?
Correct, yes.
I'm on here, though, you're asking for vacation of it, right?
Ultimately...
The application you filed asked it to be vacated, but when you started off tonight, you said you wanted them to lift the maintenance obligation. You want it vacated and the maintenance obligation?
Correct, that's basically, right.
Okay.
And you have a plan, if you do, that you want to, like, put in a pool or something?
No, no, right now, we have, both of us have no plan to do anything there. But in future, we may make use of it, but I don't see anything we are doing there.
Can, can you describe what you do on an annual basis to maintain it in its current state?
I can speak to that. I've been there for 14 years.
Sure.
The only thing we had to do was basically have it plowed.
Okay.
That was it.
So there's no maintenance of vegetation, overgrowth?
You can, if there's trees in the way, but not too much of it.
Who paved it?
The developer.
The developer.
Can you take that microphone when you're talking?
The developer paved it.
So since the development, it hasn't been resurfaced or seal coat, nothing?
It's never used. I, I'm the only one that ever uses it, and that's just to go up and down to the shed. There's nothing.
I'm sorry, when, when was, when did the developer pave it?
I was the first one in the development, 2004. I bought the house in December 2003.
So since 2004, it has not had anything done to it?
No, I mean, whatever did, I, I did. Any maintenance has only been done by me in that particular, my property line. That was it.
And so just curious, from the board members who went to the property, is the condition of the pavement consistent with something that hasn't?
The condition, it's really, really nice, like, if you were a kid, you'd want to be skateboarding, you'd want to live, it's a nice hill, yeah.
It's been meant for the kids to use the pond and fish, that's it.
Well, I was looking for gravel road, so I was, I thought it was your driveway at first, but...
And, and that's why the gate's there.
So...
Oh, I see, to dissuade people from using it.
Right.
Yep.
What I could see, it was, it was in good shape.
I, I would second that. I, I think one of the reasons it's in good shape, it's such a sloped area, the water doesn't sit there.
And, and we also talked to a few neighbors. We socialized the idea, and they are fine. Nobody objected to that.
These are fairly substantial homes that are there, correct?
Correct.
So while you say there's 11 homes, it's not your standard, you know, 2,000-square-foot home? The average home there is about 5,000 to 6,000 square feet, right?
Right.
Hence, you know, the alternate water source might be important.
And, no, I mean, it's there, and it had access from Wisteria.
And when you purchased the home, you were aware that there was a restriction on, that you had a deed restriction, right? An easement on your property?
Correct, yes.
And I assume that you paid a value that was less than the going rate, market rate in that area because of that easement?
Not really, I am not aware, because we were just homeowners, we want to live there, so we don't know whether it was low or not. But I was told that there is an easement, and, and he also mentioned that it could be vacated because...
Who mentioned, who's he?
Um...
The homeowner that sold to you?
The homeowner, who sold it.
He, he was the original person that owned all 44 acres and sold it to the developer.
So he had a vested interest in selling it to you, so he made a representation that you could possibly vacate the easement, but then...
That was the estate? The estate was the one that sold, that had the land, right?
And the gentleman lived there up until last year.
Mr. Durkin?
Mr. Durkin.
Mr. Durkin?
It's, it's my understanding that that emergency access road was the original driveway from the original estate, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Right.
And that's why they left it.
Yeah, maybe that's, again, I don't know what the board was thinking in 2001, but because it was existing, you know, that sort of made it easy to keep it as an emergency access road. Again, I don't know what...
They didn't create the road, it was there.
Right.
I have another question.
Because the road, the original house was on your property, Mr. Ahmad, right?
Correct.
Okay, Ms. Strangelo?
Well, you went before the Board of Adjustment just recently, in January, correct, this year?
According to, yes.
And this, according to Mr. Schli's memo number four, the variance approval allows disturbance to certain steep slope areas, so they gave you that, for the purpose of constructing the new dwelling, and is subject to continued compliance with all conditions of the subdivision approvals, including, but not limited to, the maintenance of the emergency access road. So the intent, two months ago, or three months ago, of the Board of Adjustment was to retain that emergency access road.
Right.
Just so you understand, again, I'm not taking a position, that does not bar him from asking...
No, I understand that.
The present application, sure.
I understand that, I just wanted to make it clear that he's already been put on notice again that the intent of another Board of this township is that, that be continued, that's all.
So, I, I have another question, so...
Go ahead, Ms. Dupree.
Maybe this was asked and I missed it. So, your responsibility is the maintenance of the road.
Right.
And why do you want to not, why don't you want to maintain it anymore? Is it a cost issue?
Uh, it is not only the cost, for example, why we had to go into variance? Because it was right go-through in the middle, and we have to put the house on one side. So, because of that, we kind of went to variance. It wasn't existed there.
But that wouldn't change.
Sorry?
How, how would that change?
No, it's not changing, no, it's not changing, I'm just saying. So, um, so the way it drives the property is kind of make it a little less useful, I think.
So, you have, is there property on, on the other side of the road that forms?
Yes, my property is like half on the other side and half is on this side.
Do you know, how much does it cost, between the two of you, to snowplow it every year?
I have not been there.
Okay, well, you have for, for a bunch of years. How much does it cost to snow?
Previous owner used to do it for me.
For nothing?
A tractor, he had a tractor, but it would probably be, the one time he was on vacation, it cost me 250 bucks every time it snowed, just to plow the access road.
But again, you did buy the house knowing that it was there, right? And...
Yeah, I was told, yeah.
Well, you can see it, right? When you weren't just told, you, I assume that you visited the property and during your inspection saw a big road behind your house that you were going to buy.
Correct, yes, but it more looked like a driveway, and I, I don't know if you have seen the old house. Things are very different.
Right, you, you...
Put it this way, you're not going to deny that at the time you bought the house, you're not going to say you didn't know.
No, I already said that.
Yeah, okay.
I was told, yeah.
Well, you were, I know you were told, but you saw it, you saw a road. It wasn't even, like, vegetated over gravel.
No, no, it was very similar. Only a few trees, there were trees close to it, we moved those.
Do you know what the going rate of houses are in that development?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Like, two, three, two, four, well, I, I know, it's about two, 2 million to 3 million. And I think you paid about $567,000 for the house?
That is, I paid only for the land.
The land, okay.
Yeah. The house was not livable.
Okay.
I only paid for the land. I did not pay less. This is the going rate for the land.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Drew wants to give a side of legal case?
Yeah, so, in my crib sheets, I have a crib sheet for modification of prior conditions. And so what I say in there is that the courts have held that a board has the power to modify or eliminate prior approval conditions, basically on three bases. A showing of changed circumstances, and that's what the applicant is saying, changed circumstances because of RSIS. Other good cause warrant and modification, that's what the board found in the case of Emerald Valley. Good cause. And then frustration of appropriate purpose, which doesn't apply here at all. What I wanted to point out was that the court, the appellate division, in a 1964 case, Cone versus Fair Lawn, stated that even if a condition is agreed to by an applicant, now, in this case, the condition, I read the resolution. You can't, the developer, it doesn't say the developer agreed, but it doesn't say the developer objected, and certainly, the developer didn't file any lawsuit to challenge the condition. So let's assume for argument's sake that the developer even agreed to the condition. The case says, even if the condition is agreed, it can be eliminated, but it can be eliminated if it will not have an adverse effect on public health or safety. So, my, so, in my, the way I'm looking at things, it doesn't really matter to me whether this RSIS number four is a change of circumstances or not. Let's assume it is, but I believe the board's focus in this application should be on whether or not can you eliminate the condition without having an adverse effect on public health or safety? If the board comes to the factual finding that it can be eliminated without having an adverse effect on public health or safety, the board can eliminate the condition. If the board cannot find that it wouldn't have an adverse impact on public health or safety, then I would say the board should not eliminate the condition. But that takes everything and focuses it on what I think the focus of this whole case should be on. Should be on, is it needed for safety, yes or no?
Okay.
I have a question about how many houses the easement, the, I'm sorry, the access road actually provides access to for fire safety purposes. The way I'm looking at this, it seems to me, unless I'm observing this incorrectly, that really only, the traverse time gets cut down for only three houses.
Correct.
Is that, is that correct? So that access road only eliminates or shortens the access time by the fire department for three of the 11 homes?
Right.
No. That's what I'm trying to get clarity on.
I don't, I don't think that's the case.
No, so, right, so that's what I'm trying to get clarity on.
Okay. Do you have the plan for any?
Well, the only access is from Mika Road.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so if you're relying on the emergency easement, how is the location of the other nine houses impacted in a positive way for access by the fire department?
Can you pull the plan and just describe the number of homes? If you don't have a plan?
He didn't have the plan. You're going to put it up, Dave? Okay, thank you.
I just want to get the answer. I'm expecting an engineer tonight here.
But Mr. Crane has, it looks like the same plan that's up on the board that was circulated to all the planning board members. Can you just for the record, what's, what is this plan titled and what's the date on it?
It's Fessent Crossing Utility Plan dated 6/7/00, revised 4/17/02.
That's the last revision, 4/17/02? Is that the plan that's up on the screen, Mr. Schli? Yes.
I would love to know, if the fire department is presented here.
Okay, so, Mr. Ahmad, let's, let me just walk you through it.
Nice and loud.
Oh, nice and loud, okay, so... If I can have attention of the board.
If you're going to speak loud, you will.
Catherine. Catherine. Okay, excuse me. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to drive into the development. Okay, we're going to come off of Mika Road, and there's a house to the right, first house there, right?
Is there a house to the right?
Yes.
Yes.
For him to answer.
Okay, yes.
Is the lot number of that house to the right, lot 2.01?
Correct.
Okay. Then you would go further up the road and...
The line numbers on the plan are...
Okay.
Four, five.
Okay.
Not 2.01.
It's, it's the first... It's, it's the first lot on the right.
Right.
Address.
I think it's nine wisteria.
Okay, okay, so if you go further up, the plan shows Station four plus zero, zero, right by the driveway entrance on the left inside.
In the middle of the street, you'll see four plus zero, zero, do you see, in the middle of the wisteria way, do you see a four plus zero, zero? In the middle of wisteria, yeah, that's-
Right.
Okay.
That's what we call stationing. So, to the left of that is the driveway entrance, correct?
Correct.
Call it the emergency access.
Emergency access, I'm having problems saying emergency on this road. That's just my editorial kind of, okay. So, just from a fire standpoint, for the record, if a tree falls before the access lane, you couldn't get into the development, is that your understanding?
Right.
Okay, so, so if you make a left-
Just a quick question, is there mountable curb?
Yes.
I'm not asking you, you're not the witness man, you're the board member.
That's why I sit next to him, so you had me.
Sorry about the witness.
That's okay, I deserve it.
When you're driving into the subdivision, is there mountable curb, that first section, until you get to the emergency access easement?
Um, little bit curb, yeah.
He doesn't know mountable curb.
Mountable curb, that the, uh-
It's a low curb that a fire truck can drive-
Fire truck to drive up on the lawn?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
It's at an angle, the curb's angle, first straight up and down.
Keep on asking your questions.
Yes, I will try. Okay, so if I make a left on the emergency, what we're calling the emergency access, I'm gonna call it driveway.
No, just call it the emergency access.
Emergency access. Okay, emergency access.
Okay.
And I go all the way to the end of that, on your lot.
Right.
Tree fell to the left of the driveway, going up to the other homes.
Right.
That would block five homes, correct?
Um, which five you're talking about?
The five to the north.
Where's the tree going down?
Just to the left of the emergency.
There are, okay, correct. Wisteria, he's saying if the tree fell-
We have a pointer, we have a pointer.
Here.
Yes.
Okay. Are you ready, so you gotta be downstairs.
He's saying if a tree fell here, you couldn't get to the access, and if a tree fell here, even if you took the access, you still couldn't get to five homes, that's what he's, that's what he's asking, that's what the responses were.
So five, two are in the other town, that's what?
No, I'm counting those five, the two in Burnsville.
Okay, right.
And the three in Burnstown.
In Burnstown.
Are you done with your questions?
Yeah, I just tried to answer the board member's question.
I just, I have a question, Mr. Kirkwood. According to this, there is a conceptual house, and then, an existing dwelling, is that the old house of Mr. Ahmed's, two dot oh four? Mr. Schla is two, that's miss, that's the original house.
That's the original house, which is dot dot.
All right, so.
Can I ask you, when you said before you had two reasons that you wanted to eliminate the emergency access, one was you didn't want to pay the cost of having to maintain it, which is about, the estimate's two hundred and fifty dollars every time it snows, right?
Well, shared, right, between the two?
Oh, a hundred and twenty-five dollars apiece, that's a good point, correct? Based on his estimate?
Basically on his estimate.
Right, because you've never done it before, right?
Uh, not really, I did once, but I did myself.
Okay, second question.
I didn't have that much money.
You said the second question was, you would like to have it removed because then you'd have an easier place to locate your home, correct? That's what you said.
No, basically, the-
Because my question's gonna be, then why try to eliminate it, why not just try to move it, get the board to approve moving it more towards your side lot line? So it's out of your way, and it doesn't interfere with your use of the property? I'm asking him.
Yeah, I think it will be much harder to move it, just probably, we thought about it, we discussed it, and I think we found the only suitable is that if it could be eliminated, remove that.
He had said before he wanted to have more use of his property, so I'm asking, again, there's a proposed plot and grading plan, correct? This is in the board packet?
Yes.
Now, what's this one, what's the title and the date?
Plot and grading plan, wisteria way, dated five, twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, revised eight, twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-one. I think this is the plan that went to the Board of Adjustments.
Mr. Banish, Mr. Schla, do you have this plan in front of you, the one that went to the Board of Adjustment?
That was submitted, uh, we had-
But, this is the plan, the planning board got.
Right, this is the one that went to the planning board.
The Board of Adjustment.
But also us.
Right, but also the planning board. It disseminated from the Board of Adjustment, but it was submitted to, as part of the planning board packet.
Before months of engineering.
Yes, so the question is, is there anything with the elevation shown on that plan that's in the record in this case, that would say the emergency access couldn't be moved towards the side property line to let him have more use of his property? Is there any physical elevation issues that would prevent, that's what I'm asking? That, but I wanna get one of our experts.
Okay.
Doesn't matter to me, either side, just to, I wanna know if he can physically, is it reasonable for him to move it, or are there steep slope problems that it can't be moved so that he'd have more use of his lot rather than where it's currently located?
It wouldn't cause a steep slope issue, it wouldn't require any more of a variance in Board of Adjustment, only granted, the band of steep slopes is like right through the center of the house, front or rear.
Right, not near the road, right?
Could be engineered to, you know, to work.
You're also talking about another disturbance?
The most likely, the most likely least disturbance solution would be, in my view, on to relocate portion of the north side, or the north side lot, on the south side lot line, I think he's got a rear pre-engineers plant because of the slope.
Okay.
And I think you'd have to go back to the Board of Adjustment.
But is he even asking for that?
No, I'm just, he stated the two reasons, you, someone asked him.
Why are we going down this route?
Well, yeah, now that I'm looking at it, it goes right through your property, right, almost right, so it's just really very inconvenient.
I mean, so, and this is a vacant lot, right, you're gonna build a house. So, I understand why you want to eliminate it, just rip it out and be done with it.
Right.
Yes, who has a question, do you, go ahead.
Dave, was there a, a close limit to disturbance an acre here? And if they didn't disturb the road, they might be under?
They're right, they're under an acre as far as the disturbance would be, what's on it.
So if they, if they ripped out the driveway, they'd probably be over the acre?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Really, are there questions of board members or comments?
I, I would really like to hear from a fire official, I mean, other than what's written, because we're looking to overrule a public health measure if we decide to let him get rid of this. And we have a very specific denotation from the Township of Burners Fire Prevention Bureau that in no uncertain terms says that they strongly suggest that we deny the-
Well, I will tell you this, in the few times where this has come up in the past, and you've asked them to come, then they come, you would adjourn it.
We would have to adjourn it and carry it.
Carry it and ask them to come.
I'm not speaking for the entire board, but I am not comfortable approving this application without hearing from a fire prevention official. I, I know Mr. Crane has a lot of institutional knowledge, but he's not a fire prevention official, and this is, you know, my opinion.
Okay, let me do a straw poll on that, about, Mr. Emergen, would you like to have the fire prevention, a fire prevention official come and talk about this application, about the safety aspects?
To answer it simply, yes, yes, this is, this is a very difficult flip of a coin, it's just, there's so many issues that, yeah.
I would agree, I would like to hear from a fire official, if I can just continue specifically, what I would be interested in hearing is something that came up in Emerald Valley that is not within the four corners of what they sent us, is whether, you know, these fire trucks could drive up onto people's lawns in order to get the access, which they seem to be able to do in that case, not sure about here, and that's one thing I would like to know.
Interesting, okay, thank you, Mr. Crane?
Yes, yes, like to see a fire official.
Uh, Ms. Mascherangelo, yes, uh, Ms. Mandu?
Yes, I think this February fourteenth memo seems qualified at the end, and focused on the RSIS as opposed to access, so definitely wanna hear.
Mr. Bowman?
Uh, I'll agree, sure.
Okay, Mr. Eorio?
Yes.
And Mr. Malik?
Yes.
Okay, so, and I do agree, so I think that we are all, want to hear from the Fire Prevention Bureau official specifically about the safety aspects, but also to dip in the mayor McNally's point about whether they could use, go over the properties if they had to, and go over other properties. So, at this point, Mr. Drill, I think that we will then carry this application, we have to have a vote? Or no, after I open it up and all of that, for questions?
Can I ask, can you augment your testimony with regard to what you would do if the board granted the application? You've testified so far that nothing right now, right? I'm, I'm a little stuck on the analysis, save for the fire official's testimony, and we can put them on the, on the hot seat, pun intended, regarding whether or not they genuinely need this access. I mean, there's a famous saying, never ask a barber if you need a haircut, right? Asking a fire official if they want an emergency access, I think we pretty much, their memo is clear on where they stand, and I suppose their testimony will follow suit. But for the board to really analyze whether or not to approve the application, can you give us anything else? Because, because it's, it's vacating a safety addition to the development, but it doesn't seem like there's a reason you wanna do it, other than you'd like to have a little bit different use of your property. But, I'm feeling like there's more out there, so what, can you augment your testimony? What in the long run, down the road, do you plan to do if you guys abandon this access? Sure, sure.
For me, the privacy is the most important.
Can you, yeah, yeah, microphone?
So for me, the most important thing is our privacy when we are in the yard, there is a pool there as well. There is a nice tree line between our and our neighbor's yard, except for that area where that easement or access is passing through. It just gives a different feel that there is a road passing through, you know, through the middle of your backyard. And yes, we did know it when we bought the property, but we had this in mind that we would probably come with an application and we would be able to probably vacate it, so we had that in our mind.
You just, well, you, what do you mean probably vacate it?
Probably.
There was no assurances given by anyone?
No, they didn't give us any kind of like assurance, but he did look it up, and then we did know about this Emerald Valley, you know, case as well. So we had this in mind that we may be able to bring up an application.
Okay, let me ask you something, you've mentioned privacy, couldn't you put a berm of trees in front of the road, between your house and the roads? Couldn't you plant trees in front of the road so you don't see the road?
Um, no, I, there is not much, there, there is not much space that, the pool is, are very close to the-
I, I kinda disagree, not kinda disagree, I do disagree, because I did go see the site today, and you could move your property or build a smaller house, if that's the most important thing to you, and put trees behind it.
Trees behind the house?
Yes, she's talking about privacy as an issue. I guess it depends what size house you wanna build, right, and where you wanna locate your house, but you could, she, your wife is talking about privacy, there is an opportunity to put trees in front of the road so that you don't have-
Number one is that we supposed to clear from the trees, the access easement, there shouldn't be any tree close by that could hinder.
Right, but you could still put trees so that you don't have to see-
I don't think there is much space, we want a nice backyard behind, there is not a space that you could also tree block and-
But that's a decision, you know, you have to make, because you bought a house with an easement, and so you might want a nice backyard, you could build a smaller house and have a bigger backyard.
Well, we, we thought about it, and we, our neighbors, couple of them, we talked, and they, they are not happy with building a smaller house. They actually reached out to me, and they said, all these properties are bigger house, make sure that you build a house accordingly.
Uh-huh, are your neighbors paying for your house?
Well, they said this is the neighborhood, and that's what they suggested, because it may affect their property.
It's a beautiful neighborhood, I mean, it's one of the nicest in the town, you don't wanna put a little tiny house on, next to these big, I, I understand the situation, I understand the point you're trying to make, but it's kind of a hardship issue.
Right, but I, 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 I just, I wanna thank the applicant for your honesty, right? It's, it's, the, the answer for the testimony you've provided is, we don't care for it, it doesn't make for a typical or traditional backyard experience with our pool, right? I'm characterizing your testimony, you can tell me if I'm mischaracterizing it. When we acquired the land, it was in our minds to come in and ask, and if possible, have this vacated, remove it, make a more traditional backyard experience, and, and, and that's, that's the plan you're trying to, to make happen.
Yeah, I, I actually reached out to David, at that time, David Schla, when I was in the process of purchasing the property, and he, he thought that we could do that, because there was a case in Emerald Valley recently happened, he was saying it's very similar, and you have a, you have a good chance. So that kind of gave me confidence also that, and I moved with the process.
Can I ask you something, are you using part of the emergency access as your driveway to the house, that's what it looks like on the plan?
Correct.
That's why it was the last plan, right?
Is that, like, if I, again, I don't, I'm not a fireman, but if, if, if I'm a fireman, I'm gonna have a problem with that, because if you park your cars on the, in the driveway, they're gonna have to go on the grass or go around, I don't know.
I mean, do you have the legal right to have your driveway over the emergency access easement?
I believe so, it says that we can use as a driveway.
That's what the document says?
That was the previous owner's driveway.
I understand that, but, do you guys have a copy of the actual access easement?
Uh, yeah, I think it was submitted, yeah.
So, just kinda ask a question, in front of your garages, there's a parking area by that, by that stone wall.
Right.
Are we talking, who are we talking about, what, which, whose house, whose house, the Kirkwoods' house or-
No, the, the proposed house that he got permission from the Board of Adjustment. That's the plan that I, that I looked at, that's why I asked him the question, because all of a sudden it dawned on me, it looked like his driveway was on the emergency access.
Here's the emergency access easement, is that the recorded, okay.
Okay, why?
Do we have Board of Adjustments, um, January twenty, twenty-two, a resolution?
The plea was included in the answer.
Oh, I missed something, do you have that?
I'm welcome.
While we're looking, can I ask the, your first name, my first? Your concern about privacy, is it just somebody going up the road privacy? Because you could, would you be okay if they allowed it, just a gate to, to stop people from going through? Satisfy your privacy issue, or is the issue the, the road itself?
I mean, it could help if we can-
Loud, loud, loud?
I mean, it could help if we can place a gate, but what I was talking about was between our house and our neighbor's house, is a nice tree line, and it breaks where that easement is passing, where that emergency pathway is passing. If we don't have that, then we'll have a nice tree line separating both properties.
Okay, so I just looked at the recorded access easement, and on page three, paragraph seven, they do have the right to use, occupy, and enjoy the subsurface under and the airspace over the easement area for a driveway, and any lawful purpose which does not unreasonably interfere with or unreasonably threaten the safe, proper, and convenient use and occupancy of the act-
of the access easement, you know, for the emergency purposes. So it looks like they have the right to do that, but probably you could make an argument that they can't, you know, park.
But it makes no sense. On the one hand, they're saying.
That's what it says.
It shouldn't impede emergency access, but you could use it as a driveway.
Okay, so where are we with this now?
We want to bring the fire department.
Right, that was the last thing. Are there any other questions?
Two questions, just.
Mr. Crane?
When you come back to the board here, I think both of you may consider, would you be, would you commit to leaving the access road in? And if the, it only has to be gravel, is my understanding, even if the pavement breaks up, that would be a potential way of the fire company getting through. My understa, I'm not going to give a testimony, but I believe from a fiscal standpoint, the fire company could still get through there, so.
So your question to them is, are you asking them to consider withdrawing the request to vacate it and just leave the request to not have to maintain it? So he's saying that, this is one board member.
Yes.
That you should think about when you come back, maybe if you didn't request that the board approved vacating the easement, and just ask them to vacate your obligation to maintain it, he's suggesting that that might at least persuade him, whereas, let's leave it at that.
There's something up. The, the other suggestion I would make is bring an engineer to, to testify on RSIs.
Are there any other questions? Okay, at this point.
Can I make a comment about, about the, the letter? I guess we can ask the, whoever represents the, the fire department when they come, but I want to know specifically when they used this access road? Because doesn't it say in the letter that they used it previously?
Yeah, it says. In fact, I think the request should be to the Basking Ridge Fire Department, to have them send a representative, because the Fire Prevention Bureau, the fire official has reported in the first paragraph that the Basking Ridge Fire Department told him, and that's what he put in.
So instead of putting them on the spot, can we reach out to them in the meantime to get some information on?
Yeah, we would, we would ask, we would tell them what we want them to talk about and ask that they be, come to the next meeting where this is scheduled.
And I'm going to suggest that you ask the fire, the fire official and whoever from the fire department.
A representative from the ER Fire Company.
And, and I make one other comment, if they could also speak to the possibility of actually getting a fire truck, since ambulance access or is it a fire truck access?
Okay, well, the board resolution said everything.
I'm just saying physically, does the fire department physically think they can get a forty-foot fire truck?
All right, so they have to comment about the, their equipment.
Yep.
The feasibility of their equipment.
Whether their equipment can go over people's lawns. Whether it can.
Can it go on the easement?
Can it go on the easement?
When was it actually used?
Right, when was it actually used, right?
Or actually get into the center. My concern is the entrance.
I, well, I also think non-use is not necessarily definitive. I mean, there's hydrants all over the place that aren't used, but they're there for a reason.
Correct, but these are the, these are the questions that they should be giving a heads up about, because this is what board members want to, know that they want to ask.
My, my question would be, do they consider this as an ambulance entrance, or do they consider this as a fire truck?
Okay, we'll add that. Mr. Banish?
There were a couple comments made, one by Mr. Crane just now, that I would just like to say something about for the applicant. You know, there, there are typically devices to control access for emergency services. They're called Knox boxes, where.
A Knox lock.
A Knox lock. So, so Mr. Crane's question about putting some form of control at the property line could be a gate with a Knox lock, or a Knox box, meaning that if the emergency services ever needed to get through there, they would stop at your gate, they would unlock the gate, and they would drive through.
But if, but if emergency services didn't come there, no one else would know the Knox lock combination, so that might give you privacy, because no one else would be able to drive up there.
Okay, so, so that's just one point on the heels of what, what Mr. Crane just said. He also talked, without wanting to give any engineering testimony, that there are alternative surfaces that are available to you for the surface of this emergency access. And, and there are, and they have the structural integrity to support a fire truck passing over it, and also to allow grass to grow up inside of it. So it would at least perhaps still be discernible to the eye that it is there, but it, it would be less distinguishable, and it would blend more with the yard and the character of the yard. And the reason I bring these comments up is because this suggestion was just made, and there may be some additional discussion about it next month, so rather than wait until then to make these comments to you, I'd rather make these comments to you tonight. Okay? You're welcome.
I would just like to be clear on whether an applicant is still asking to vacate, or is looking to.
He, he doesn't know right now. He's going to think about it between now and when he comes back, I have a feeling.
Okay.
Right?
Both of you.
Yeah. Well, they are all the applicant.
Yeah.
That's helpful.
Okay. If there are no more questions, Mr. Shalai, do you have any other comments?
No.
Okay, I'm going to open this up for questions, the applicants from members of the public. I will now open the public portion up.
The public is indicating they do not have any questions.
See, not on calls, in the public questioning portion. So at this point, yes, Mr. Ahmed?
Okay, so, bringing a few members from our development here will help if they agree that they are okay and there are no safety concerns.
He wants to know if, listen, legally, you can bring any members of the development. He wants to know if he brought other homeowners that said, we don't care if we don't have this access.
You can bring as many members from the cul-de-sac as you want.
Because the board cannot accept something in writing from them, they'd have to be here.
Right. Mr. Crane?
Have you noticed all eleven, other, other than yourself, all eleven homeowners?
He wants to know who you gave the notices to.
Yeah, we gave all of them.
All eleven.
All eleven.
You didn't give it just to the two hundred footers? You gave it to all eleven?
All eleven.
Oh, all right. Okay.
Good, the reason I ask that, because it might affect everything.
Yeah, and actually, a couple reached out to me, and they actually asked me that if we could be helpful. So I, I could have brought them today, but I think I made a mistake.
Well, we're, we're going to be carrying this anyway, Mr. Ahmed, in order to bring
the fire prevention official and a member of the Basking Ridge Fire Company here. So at this point, given that the board, we all agree that we will, we cannot make a decision tonight, and we need further information from the fire prevention official and the fire company official, then I will carry, the board will carry this to the next available slot. Ms. Kiefer, Kiefer? Yeah, we have to get the officials here too, make sure that they're available.
Well, on the nineteenth, we have a completion hearing for Moye, which is an application we've heard before and that approved. Your public hearing is scheduled for May third.
April, April nineteenth, that sounds like it's a very late agenda, if it's just for completion.
Right, it's master plan and circulation.
Oh.
So, and that's.
I withdraw my comment.
Make a case for it.
How about the, what, the May third?
What about May third? May third should be very late. I'm just checking to see if we need an extension of time. If we go to May third, we need an extension of time, we need to act by April twenty-third.
So why don't we get an extension of time out to the end of June, June thirtieth?
Okay.
You agree to extend the time the board has to act till June thirtieth?
Mr. Ahmed?
You agree to extend the time the board has to act until June thirtieth?
Yeah, yeah, that is the only available date.
No, no, they're going to give you May third, but just in case of some kind of natural disaster where the buildings shut or something, the fire truck can't get here.
Too soon.
And, let's also ask Mr. Kirkwood, you also, you're also the applicant, you also agreed to extend the time the board has to decide till June thirtieth? Okay, so the application's going to be carried.
Carried until May third.
With no need for further notice.
No need for further notice.
And if by some reason, fire official and/or a representative of the fire department can't make it, then we can make an announcement on May third, but hopefully that's plenty of time they'll be able to make.
Right, and at that point, if, on May third, at the next meeting, if you want to bring any of the other homeowners of the cul-de-sac, feel free to bring them.
May three.
May third.
And maybe an engineer.
Okay.
Just as a adjustment.
Let me just, what do they, I don't want to drive up the cost, what do they need an engineer for?
If I, if I had questions, then I'd have to ask a certain percent of roads and transitions and.
But this is an issue of vacation of an easement or, or safety.
Unless you disagree that it's, that it's safety. If you think, does this come down to more than safety for you?
I don't want to, I, I question the, the, the emergency access, because being so steep in the access and the entrances.
But that was approved prior.
Yeah, but you're going to have the fire department and the fire official, and they testify in reality, can they get a truck there?
Okay.
It's not going to matter what, in my opinion, it's not going to matter what an engineer says in theory should or shouldn't be, you're going to have the people that drive the vehicles.
Are we talking only about fire officials too? I mean, can they testify to the ambulance?
Well, put it, the fire truck is going to be the largest and heaviest emergency vehicle. If a fire truck can make it, everyone can make it.
The only thing they could, that testifies is the RSIS.
Okay, and just explain, how is RSIS, we're assuming that that's a change of circumstances. So if we're assuming it's a change of circumstances, how does additional testimony in RSIS help them? Unless the engineer can point out something in the RSIS that says you can't have a secondary access, which if this is the case, I think we should just contact the township engineer and save them the money. Because if they bring an engineer, it's going to cost them a minimum, a minimum of fifteen hundred dollars.
Of the pertinent planning board attorney.
Can we ask Mr. Shalai to check with the township engineer, or actually the board engineer? Is there anything in the RSIS that says a planning board is not allowed to impose an emergency access on a long cul-de-sac?
May I ask Mr. Plebnyer, please? All right, so this is now carried until May third, twenty twenty-two, with no further notice needed.
You got it.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
My hero will be upset with me.
Tonight, thank you.
Mr. Mr. Banish, did you have any cleanup prior to starting circulation?
Not for the discussion this evening.
Okay. I guess we can start and, start it for about an hour, forty-five minutes. What does the board feel about that?
Hey, with me.
Yeah, whatever you want to do.
Okay, we'll start it. We probably will not finish.
I've received a number of comments already from board members as a result of their review of the draft circulation plan element. Some of them are clarifications. Dave Shalai pointed out that I think I missed the mark by about a hundred thousand square feet on a, on an approved office building, which is going to change the number of trips that I have calculated in a table demonstrating traffic generation, but it'll be the same traffic generation for the residential stuff. So there was, there were kind of a number of editorial things that, that have come to my attention so far, and some minor substantive comments as well. If any of you have any other comments or questions, we can start there, or if you'd like me to review the comments I've received, I, I can do that. Does the board have a preference?
I just had a, you referred to table five dash two, but I never saw table five dash one. Members have comments, just say them, please.
I, I'd email the.
I'd email Mr. Banish.
Yep, I'll go through those comments too. Okay, I'll start with Ms. Masstrangela's comments that I received. Traffic and circulation objectives. She asked, why is pedestrian friendliness especially needed in the historic settlements of Basking Ridge, Liberty Corner, and Madisonville? And noted that she didn't understand why these areas were singled out, and what are the historic settlements of Basking Ridge? And I think they, I, I think maybe historic is perhaps a misnomer, maybe it should be the established settlements might be a better way of describing it, because I think that would be more encompassing with the neighborhoods surrounding.
I guess my point was why, are you saying that they're more pedestrian friendly because the, the footprint of the homes is smaller and, and they're closer to the centers of town? I didn't really understand.
What was the logic? Why those areas?
Well.
Well, commercial uses, connectivity to neighborhoods, and among the different commercial civic uses that are found in those areas, I think, are.
I, I see that with Liberty Corner and Basking Ridge, but Madisonville, isn't that Madisonville Road, which is where Delicious Heights is and Basking Ridge Country Club?
Yes.
I don't, I don't see any, I don't, I don't see pedestrian friendliness in that area.
Take Madisonville out?
I see the other two because, I see the other two because they are, you know, Basking Ridge is a commercial center, Liberty Corner is slowly getting more businesses in, and you see sidewalks and everything, but I, I, I could see those two, but I can't see Madisonville at all.
Okay.
And I would have added the Lyons Mall area for where the train is and the bus and the shopping there as well, based on what you're suggesting.
Yes.
I think we just have to flesh out why that's important, why those areas were singled out.
Well, Liberty Corner and Basking Ridge do have some historic background to them.
Do they estimate that it's historic?
Yeah.
Yeah, whereas Lyons.
That is not as historic or not.
But, but, okay, so by historic meaning, you want people to be able to visit the historic? I, I just don't get it.
Well, that's, I don't get it entirely either, but I think the historic word brings those three together.
I understand that, but I think he's saying established is really more appropriate, because historic doesn't necessarily mean that we need pedestrian friendly, right?
Whatever probably was saying, established settlements of Basking Ridge.
Am I understanding that right, Mr. Banish? Paul, you're, you're really speaking about the established areas that lend themselves to commercial?
Well, yes. When I read your comment, my reaction to it was the established settlements. Well, first of all, let me back up for a second and talk more generally about some of the other neighborhoods in town, some of the larger lot suburban neighborhoods, not the smaller lot settlement areas that are found in Liberty Corner, Basking Ridge, to a lesser extent over in Madisonville, but setting Madisonville aside for the moment. When you take a, you know, the bird's eye view of town, what you find is that a lot of those large lot subdivisions have established characters, they've got some fairly wide roads. They don't have sidewalks.
Right.
It would be monumental capital expenditure to put the sidewalks in those neighborhoods where they already have wide roads that have relatively light traffic patterns. And the width of those roads can relatively easy, easily accommodate pedestrian and bicycle traffic through those neighborhoods. So I was trying to distinguish between those areas without drawing a bright line and, and going into that, this explanation that I've just offered.
Yeah, I would kind of disagree, like White Neck Road is very difficult to walk upon, it's, but it's.
It's a good example of one that is. It's more a historic rural road, it's not one of the subdivision roads that I, that I was just referring.
But it could use a sidewalk.
Sure could.
And Emily Road is, is a big division, subdivision, but it, with wide roads, but it does have sidewalks that people use. I just, I, I couldn't get the logic on it.
Mm-hmm, well, then maybe, maybe I should ask the question. How does the board feel about recommending sidewalks in all the residential subdivisions? Because they're found in some places.
That would be a pretty big task.
No, I don't wanna put my name, I'm just trying to understand, well, again, I think it should be fleshed out a little bit as to even just the settled areas or the established areas.
Okay.
And I would add Lyons there.
Understood, I agree with that.
Because it might not be an established historic area, but it has the bus and train connectivity as well as Lyons Mall and grocery and et cetera.
Think of historic areas already have sidewalks, right? Like Basking Ridge has sidewalks on both sides, right? Liberty Corner, I'm quite sure.
Yeah, as soon as you get over to Spencer.
There's some sidewalks in Liberty Corner.
The next point raised was having to do with traffic generation. She wanted to, suggested I add some more clarifications in there and the way I describe the Mountain View project. And also to highlight a substantial decrease in trips as compared to the proposed office building. Reconcile the use of, maybe referencing them somewhat differently, but I, I think I take your point there. And then you also clarified that the assisted living redevelopment project is actually located at the intersection of Mount Ari and White Knack Roads, yeah. Isn't that called the Meeker Road extension as well?
Really White Knack and Mount Ari there.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, clearly, Mount Ari and White Knack is, I think is the most.
Right.
Exacting location that could be used to describe that. I didn't check out the new connector road comment that you made in terms of roadway improvements.
Well, you said under roadway improvements.
Yeah.
I wish these were painted, but improvements to the roads in boroughs township have already been constructed by the public and private sectors, including the rehabilitation of existing facilities, construction of a new connector road. I think you meant that to be the one on Somerville, I don't know if that's.
Somerville Road Extension.
Is that what you meant?
Yeah, I think so.
I, I didn't wanna guess.
In that list.
That's been a while, though.
I just wanted to know what the new connector road is or the connection.
The Somerville Road Extension.
So maybe you should, we should put in that's what it is?
Yep, I agree.
That's, that's one that goes to Cran, uh, Canterbury.
Pardon me?
Goes through Canterbury Development.
Right, I didn't wanna guess as to that. And then you said that the table, following table this, and the, the following table didn't come for.
Couple paragraphs.
Yeah, I mean, unless you wanted to say at the end of this, I don't know, it just.
No, I think it, I think it should be moved, it makes sense.
Yeah, I don't think we have to go through all my small.
Okay.
I mean, the intersection needs, there, you were mentioning signalization of Canterbury Way and Old Mine Brook Road.
Monitor for that, yes.
But there's been several safety improvements there.
There have been.
The bumps and all of that.
I don't think that we would suggest a signalization at that intersection.
There was a comment came out of the engineering department.
But I think it was previous to all of these improvements, right?
No, it was fairly recent, actually.
Even after the.
Very recent, yes.
I, I know I have had to traverse that, and I still think that's a rather dangerous intersection, frankly.
Okay, so that, that suggestion came from the engineering department after they put in both?
Yeah.
Speed reduction?
Yes.
All the calming techniques, I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, everything. And it's only monitoring, that's the recommendation, monitor.
I thought, I didn't realize that they'd come after that, okay.
Well, I think we're probably, that's the least desirable solution out of the box. I think they're trying to see what they can get done with the traffic calming and the other improvements that were made there. And so now they're gonna continue to monitor it, to see if it ultimately needs a light. And I suppose I can embellish on that or make that somewhat clear with, by way of an explanation.
Yeah. And I mean, the only other area that I thought was really important was to add where the EV set, station, charging stations are, which we talked about before.
Yes.
Right now, they're only, there's the Town Hall. And Dewey Meadow, but Dewey Meadow is restricted to Tesla only. The one.
Public Works, yeah.
Are those more general, those EV charging stations of public works?
I always don't know if those are available to the public.
Oh, they may not be available to the public, okay.
Does the township have electric vehicles?
Yeah, well, the hybrid vehicles are not sure.
Does the police play station have, no, they don't have electric charging, right?
I don't think so.
And the new develop, and new developments going forward are required to have EV, correct?
Well, a certain size.
Certain sizes.
So Dewey Meadow will have to have them?
No, they were grandfathered in. Mountain View was grandfathered in, it would be any future development up to a cap and certain, you can only, and then you get a credit on parking spaces up to a cap of ten percent of spaces. But right now, the two developments that are being constructed were prior, so they don't. Yes, they are, they are included in the draft going forward.
Yeah, I think just then it's the.
Put the table in, identify the locations.
I don't think EV requires a table because there's only a couple.
I think there's only, and one of them is restricted to Tesla.
Maybe we shouldn't show it. It won't be progressive, it shouldn't.
Uh, Dave Schley picked up some changes that are needed on pages three, four, and five. And, you know, I don't know what happened to the page numbers, they shouldn't have fallen out of existence.
The first few pages.
The first few, and then we start with eighty-five, kind of when you're five pages in.
Yeah, sorry about that, but I'll, I'll swear that one.
It's very hard to lift out a piece and get the pagination correct.
So I need to correct the previously approved office development from four hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-nine square feet to three hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five square feet.
Okay.
And a couple of other minor changes like that in those first few pages. And then Dave suggested designating the Dewey Meadow athletic field that this board saw as a recreational resource. But the Dewey Meadow folks bought that back from the township. You all recall.
Oh, yeah.
And he just thinks that the figure four should be clarified with respect to that.
Yeah, he's right.
Yeah, you have a couple of instances where Dewey Meadow is D E W E Y, where it should be D E W Y. I'm sure you can do a word search on that.
Yeah.
And on the first page in the middle, next to the picture, the left of the picture says, scheduled rail and bus service also make, you have roadways there.
Yeah.
That should be underneath the picture, I think.
Yeah.
It says including county roadways.
I had a lot of trouble formatting this, I apologize for that.
Do you do it in Word?
Uh, yes.
Oh, well, that, that's the answer, because you can, you know, it, you think it's going here and then it goes there. And then you, you send it or print it, and the recipient gets a totally different view, so you almost have to send it in PDF.
Yeah, I didn't pick that up on the screen.
Yeah.
And I didn't print it.
And, yeah, well, it's printed sometimes isn't on the screen, yeah.
Okay. Uh, I think if you look at V two, figure, or, in the legend, I think four and five are backwards. Okay.
I'd make comments on that.
Yes, John Crane picked that up as well. Uh, John Crane's comments. Stay with me just a second.
We don't need to go over small.
Nope, we're not going to.
Only the Craneisms.
Well, one of the big things he brought up, he had, he had some, he had some comments about my numbers and traffic generation and trying to put that in context. And I'll, I'll take a look at all that, John, but one of the big comments he had was page nine, item eleven, concept plan for the loop road around the high school. That was also a suggestion from the township engineer to alleviate the traffic congestion at the high school. And his point very clearly was, if you could get the traffic off the road, it wouldn't be stacking at the intersection.
Did they actually do a plan, I'm just curious how they.
They haven't, they haven't. And, and, and if you look at the aerial photograph, I know, I, I spent quite a bit of time.
See that long boulevard?
Looking at that, yeah, it, it looks like it's gonna be a significant undertaking, and I had begin to wonder whether a secondary means of access actually from.
War Memorial area?
No, from next to the engineering.
Right, next to engineering.
Come back, come off the back.
Come up the back way?
Oh, yes, is that, yeah.
I think that was looked at originally too, right?
Yeah.
A long time ago.
Because the loop's gonna be tight, there are certainly tight clearances on the south side of the school.
Just curious.
And, and then let's see what else John had here. Some labeling.
Electronic, electric bikes.
I guess the big question I had was, did we take credit for the existing buildings? Like AMP and the existing office building?
No, I did not, and you know, I, in reaction to your comment, I thought about it. And I thought that traffic generation was so low because those, that project had basically become a commercial failure. I can certainly, I, I, you know, it, it's not like it would be operating as would be expected or as forecast in the IT because, you know, one of the reasons they came back to you for redevelopment of that site was because it was pretty much dying on the vine. I can go through that exercise, but I think it would just be academic.
It would be academic.
Yeah.
And, and the same thing with the other office building that they took down?
No, the other office building I have to correct.
No, 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 the, on, on Meeker, Meeker and White Knack.
White Knack and Mount Ari.
Right, no, but that one I didn't put in to the calculations.
You mean that little office building that was torn down?
Well, it was a king of kings.
Well, yeah, but prior to that, it was part of Avaya, it was a very small satellite office of Avaya.
Right. Well, I, I didn't put that one into the peak hour calculations because of, oh, no, I did. Actually, I did put that, I'm sorry, I stand corrected.
No, I'm just asking if it's worth, if it's worth getting the credit for that, or is this a minor?
No, I didn't, no, I did not, I did not deduct, I did not deduct what was on that site. But that was another example of a failed site, I guess.
I guess what I was trying to get, and maybe it's hard, was, you know, when we say eight hundred and seventy-three peak hours, that sounds like a lot, a lot of people don't understand that. I'm just, just to put it in context, is that one percent of what we have now? I think it would be less than one percent if we got ten thousand homes already.
I think it would be.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if you can take the homes and the office building, just two minute calculation, just say it's less, you know, it's less than one percent. I'm just, I'm just going, if you got five thousand homes, that's fifty thousand. If you got five thousand condos and apartments, that's another six, thirty thousand. You got, I don't know how many millions of square feet we've got, so I'm thinking it's at least, or at least a hundred thousand at this point in the town. The, the other comment I didn't put in here, I think you made a good point about the affordable homes being by seventy-eight. We also plan to put all office buildings by the highways, so they're either by two eighty-seven or seventy-eight.
No, he mentioned that.
Huh, did he?
Yeah, he mentioned the proximity that the, that the homes were.
No, 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 I'm talking office buildings, yeah.
I mean, oh, office buildings, sorry.
Yeah, that's always been a big thing with the town, keeping the office buildings like.
Near major arteries.
Right there, by the interchange.
Yeah, yeah, like Verizon used to be the AT&T and the, there's another one off of two eighty-seven on Mount Ari and then the ones on seventy-eight. Basically, your office buildings are right by an intersection with the same idea, it's gonna minimize the impact. It's, it's just good planning that we've done in the past.
No, I understand that.
That's a good point, yeah.
It's something really for the land use plan, but it's an important comment to add in here as well. Because it simply reinforces that, you know, that basic planning approach to accommodating those uses.
The other, maybe it's appropriate or not appropriate, maybe we can show the two train station on your map.
Pardon me?
The two train stations, can we just spot those? The, the, the timing of the two buildings, I think, I don't think the Mountain View is just starting right now.
Yeah, that was a little bit of, of an overlap there.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we may not even be seeing substantial occupancy until like twenty twenty-five.
Where's that, on Mountain View?
Mountain View, yeah.
I mean, AMP site is.
Dewey is much further ahead of that.
It's there, yeah, they're, they're much further.
One building is really, I mean, they're taking lease, they're advertising for lease, they're taking lease applications.
Anything else, John?
Just some minor stuff.
Should I give you a call to talk about?
Sure.
All right.
I'm retired, so I'm available.
I'm not, but I am.
I'll stand, I'll stand by the phone.
Mister Banish on New Jersey Transit on page ninety-six. If I am correct, Lakeland provides express and local bus service to the port authority, not New Jersey Transit.
That's correct, that's right.
So it's Lakeland Bus Company.
Thank you.
Do, do we know where they stop?
Pardon?
Do we know where they stop in town?
They stop in the.
They stop right near the Shell Center, Shell Station across from the parking lot, and then they stop at a crossroad and Finley.
Finley, yeah, I seen them stop at Finley.
And I think they also stop as needed, I've seen them stop.
They'll stop to let you off, but they have pickup points.
They have pickup, but they'll stop at other intersections to let people off. But the two ma- major ones are across from the commuter lots.
Could we just verify those?
What do you mean?
Are we putting them in the report?
No, I was just, I was just saying to change it to Lakeland.
Oh, okay.
You're just kibbitting a little.
Okay, that's fine.
Are there any other comments that either we want to give to Mister Banish under separate cover if there are minor corrections or make corrections here?
I'll just say, Mister Banish, I thought it was interesting to read, and I thought you did a good job.
I really thought it was very good to read, I thought it was very easy to read.
Okay.
I didn't realize there were so many other agencies involved in various aspects of circulation. Which was good to know, I mean, a lot seems to be going on.
Yeah.
In that area.
I, I felt it was very impressive.
Yeah.
I, I don't know if I would call it convenient access the train. That's just.
Well, yeah, right, right.
Well, it's more convenient than if you live in Hunterdon County.
But convenient.
But I think that. I was reading something that they, they are aware, something about federal, that, you know, they're aware that there's only, the poles are old on the line.
Oh, yeah, eighty-two million dollar project.
Right, that. Right, that they have, they want to change it from the wooden poles to some.
Well, they're saying that the, some of the closures from the storm damage are related to the wooden poles.
Right, the wooden poles, and they know it's only one track. So it seems like it's getting a little traction about doing something about it.
Yeah.
When I, when I went to college, we spent a lot of time on the tracks waiting for diesel to drag, drag us to the station.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
That's when they had the old, the old green trains.
Just not Gladstone though, they have trouble all on the Morris Essex with the poles and everything. Okay, if there are no other comments, it looks like we, we did round one of this element, this is great.
Well, there may be more after I make the changes.
Right, next time, uh, that would be in our May meeting, second meeting in, uh, next, in two weeks, I don't know what you can prepare, what can you prepare in two weeks?
Um, I'll have the corrections on this one.
Okay.
And I'll have the corrections on the community facilities.
Okay, so basically, we'll just, um, corrections and kind of get to, you know, we'll get to a point, and then for the May meeting, we can go to another element.
Yeah.
Okay, how does?
How many more elements do we have?
You don't want to know.
We don't want to know.
I want to know.
Periodic table.
Four, five.
Oh, that's excellent.
No, no.
Not if Kippy Padici is chair of this board, we're not going to be the next two.
No, she's cracking the whip.
Let me see this.
I think most, most kids wouldn't even know what that is.
Look, but don't repeat it.
Do they still have, do they still have that script? Check with your children.
Well, we're, we're on schedule.
Is this my?
That's true.
We're plodding along, we're plodding along. So I think that we, you know, this was great for this element. So, um, yes, the next item on the agenda is comments from members, anybody have any comments? I just want to let you know, oh, pardon me, before we, pardon me, I want to open up the public for comments on this plan element.
That was a test, Todd, she wanted to see if you were paying attention.
Got to get the public.
Oh, yes, the book out and everything.
Title's on Riverside, one seventy-two Riverside Drive. Thank you, Kippy, you caught the Lakeland bus, then Coles Island mentioned that. Of course, they only travel, I think, on Finley, the Stonehouse, so that's all you get. And I guess you get New Jersey Transit on the weekends when they close the train down, which is a problem, that we should, you know, for improvements, to try to get New Jersey Transit to use that train line on the weekends more often.
It's off and on, let's put it that way.
It's all, during, I know during the summer, they shut it always down, but I mean, it becomes very inconvenient and kind of stupid to have to go to Summit, use the train on the weekends. Yeah, it's more than just a commuter railroad, it could be more. I did see some stuff. Yeah, you knocked out the Mountain View, you're going to change that to the residential. Now, I'm in front of the high school every morning. So it's a volume thing.
You don't look that.
But if you know, it, it usually from ten minutes after seven until seven thirty, seven thirty-five. That's the only time you have traffic in that area. You don't have that same type of volume in the afternoon. And if you have a delayed opening, which is two hours extra, like at nine o'clock, the same problem, because the kids are not capable of walking to school, so.
That's been a persistent problem that we, I mean, a lot of people have looked at that issue.
Well, as John knows, we weren't allowed to park on campus.
That's right.
So, um, and I.
He went to the same high school.
Is that so?
Yeah.
Oh.
He went two years after me.
Oh, okay.
And where was that?
West Orange High School.
Oh, all right.
What'd they do, did you park in the street?
No, well, you didn't have to, listen, they had so many schools, they had two high schools, four junior highs, all these elementary schools. I lived in a triangle, I was able, my entire school career, walked to elementary school, walked to middle school, walked to high school, same with him.
Oh.
Uphill ways in the snow, right?
Ten feet blizzard.
I had walked both ways, because I lived on the other side of the mountain. So, um, yeah, that's a, so that's a problem with there. Maybe if they were, allow the cars coming through the back here one way and empty out onto, um, Finley, maybe that'll help a little bit, but it makes a difference, I mean, that, they go through the wrong way on Finley to make the left turn, and you're instead going through the health department, there's, you know, can't stop these people, and it's, it's, I'm just waiting for the day when, and then.
Yeah.
I'll be the witness. Yeah, it's.
Better the wit- yeah, better the witness than the victim, that's what I was going to say.
It'll happen, it's, it's just a matter of time, I've seen a lot of those calls. In V four, figure V four, the map, for the bicycle and pedestrians, if there's a way of indicating which side of the, of the street has sidewalks and pathways, because not all, you know, some streets have, you know, sidewalks on both sides, some only have it on one side. Like Finley in the center of town, it's on both sides, but when you come up, you know, after, um, the, um, church, it's all on one side. And same thing with the pathways, maybe the way, Cola Colia, it's on one side, it's on the north side or the west side. But, because if you look at some of the, you don't know which side of the street there, these paths or sidewalks are on. And on these other maps like V one, wherever, if you get, indicate, you know, the interstates, what exit the interstate is. It's that, you know, it doesn't say, you know, exit thirty or exit thirty-six or whichever, so I think that would be more helpful. I know you don't, you don't label every street, obviously, the maps are so small, but you do label the major connectors, and I think that would be helpful. And there's some pictures in here. You don't have a lot of pictures in this, but a couple, it doesn't really, it has a picture like one on page ninety-one, it says township continues to implement off-street bikeways and bike routes. There's a picture, but you don't know where that picture is from, you don't know if that, that could be Millington, or it could, yeah, it could be.
I just, I just went out and plombed it.
It's Photoshop, I'm photoshopped.
But, you know, maybe, so if somebody looks at the picture, they have an idea, you know, basically where it is, and maybe for future, they may, you can say, oh, it looks like that now, but, you know, ten years, it could look totally different.
What, what page, Todd?
Uh, page ninety-one in the bottom corner, that's just one picture. By me, all pictures are not.
They're very generic.
I don't have anything on page ninety-one, a picture.
Oh, I have.
Oh, the old book.
Yeah, I don't have your book.
Oh, all right, okay.
I did my homework from this, I'm sorry.
All right, got it.
I don't know if you, I know you said there's on nineteen traffic lights in town. I don't know if you also included, um, the flashing, new flashing lights over at Canterbury Road there, and, um, that's some, Somerville Road, the intersection, there's flashing lights there too, I don't know if that.
But those aren't really signals, I think.
No.
Or the red signal, it's a flashing light.
But it's not a traffic signal.
Yeah, but I think, didn't you, I thought there was something in there that did mention flashing lights.
Caution signal.
I know, um, on page ninety-six of the old book, it talked about scenic routes, and in this county, there's only two scenic routes, and, and we only have one, which is, um, Liberty, um, Liberty Corner Road. And maybe that's, has to do with the historic heart of it.
Well, you know.
I don't want to be.
That is something that I think the planning board has to decide whether it wants to recommend like a scenic corridor study, designate specific scenic corridors in the town. Or, because really, it's just simply referencing what the county is identifying, and we're pointing out the fact that the county did come up with a, a good methodology.
Right.
Because they, you know, look beyond the edge of pavement, or, you know, well beyond the edge of pavement, and you're generally what a scenic corridor is, or.
Yeah, they have.
Put the positive attributes on.
They have points to it, they, like a point system.
Yeah.
Um, I saw that.
Can I mark that? I love scenic route.
Could be a lot of zeros.
Well, but, but, I think this board's spent a lot of time on site planning, whether it's the planning board or the zoning board, to make sure that roadside situations are, are appropriate to be addressed.
Well, I know a lot of times in the zoning board, people come up, yeah, they, well, it ruins the scenic look of, of our property. So I guess scenic roadways or scenic views, it's, it's something that's used all the time, like in the zoning. You know, when people comes to crap about how they don't want their neighbors to build something, it ruins, you know, the look of their house, or something like that. And it's, and it's very subjective, you know, you can't really say what's right and wrong. I think that's basically, really just maps a little bit, updating those maps a little bit, you know.
We have dozens of C U, I'm not sure we'll be able to get those.
I know, because they kind of curve around.
It's still my.
Some ways they indicate not, you know, both sides of the street doesn't have a path, or both sides of the street doesn't have. Like some of those, or school route routes, and they don't have, um, walks on both sides. Like, um, Lake Road only has a path on one side, not on the other side. Unlike Allen Road has sidewalks on both sides. I think it's about it, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Okay, um, member comment?
Uh, comment, comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, right mic here, just, uh, just going to do my annual report, because this is my first time back here on, uh, the nine.
Do you find you hear anything that you're doing?
Yes, 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 I know you look forward to that.
Annual report for what?
No, 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 it's just, uh, I, I look at the planning board members' lots, just to, to give you a feel for what's, what's, uh, what are zonings like, so.
You look at all their lots?
Yes, yes, so.
My lot?
As a street end it?
So, so.
This should be very interesting.
So, just, just so, out of the nine, uh, s- single-family lots, not including Kippy's.
Seriously, don't ident- you can generalize, don't identify who lives where.
I'm not, I'm not. But nine out of nine that have a standard lot are noncompliant in this town, so that tells us a little bit about our zoning.
I object, so what is your point, Mr. Crane?
What's the point of that?
I object.
That the point is, that's why we're, there's so many Board of Adjustments applications, because there's so many nonconforming lots.
I thought of that, because everyone wanted a pool in the concept. Why don't I conform?
Okay.
I have neither a pool.
Is that it?
That's it, that's my editorial.
Motion to adjourn. This country was founded by nonconformists.
Mr. Crane.
This town was born in nonconformity.
My sidecar setback, you're wrong. I want, I have to be conforming.
You have to.
My, um.
Do you? No.
Everybody's not.
My only member comment is, we are going to be meeting twice a month through June. I know we've gotten people like maybe once a month, but guess what?
We have a master plan.
We pay the piper, so some things are coming in, so we will be meeting twice in May, and so far, twice in June, and of course, in two weeks. Just wanted, so everybody can plan their calendars around that. Staff comments? Ms. Kiefer?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Schley? Mr. Banish?
I think I've said enough, thank you.
So I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?